This meeting of the Community District 115 Board of Education to order. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Schreiber, Mrs. Snoblen.
Here.
Mr. Mormon.
Here.
Mr. Markison.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mrs. Sorensen.
Here.
Mr. Black.
Here. My president's report tonight is quite short. Firstly, I want to say Happy New Year to everyone. From the district's perspective, it's been somewhat of a challenging start to 2015. As many of you who've been associated with the district any time probably realize, it's very unusual for us to have snow days. To have two days off in a row right before finals is certainly unusual. And...
They aren't really snow days anymore. It's temperature days.
Temperature days. Well, listen, I just wanted to comment particularly for the benefit of our parental community. These are never easy decisions. Thank God they're not mine or the board's decisions. They're Mr. Simic and the staff's decisions. But I know there's a considerable amount that goes into them. And it's something that requires a lot of thought and collaboration and data gathering. And many times, it's a no-win situation. One of our surrounding districts, I know, decided to have school indeed on that second day, that Thursday. And lo and behold, they had a fire alarm go off. And, you know, this forces kids in gym class to go outside in shorts and T-shirts for a period of time. Thank God, in that case, it was a false alarm and it didn't require any extended outdoor exposure. But there's no place in the school that can accommodate all of our students in the event of some kind of unforeseen emergency that could arise. So these are the kinds of things that go into that decision-making. And I would just ask the community to understand, we can't make all the people happy all the time, but we always keep the safety of our constituencies and particularly our students as foremost in these decisions. So with that, I turn it over to Mr. Simic and the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. Black. And I will hand off to Mr. Rogers to begin the superintendent's report with the principal's report.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. And I think on behalf of all of our students and staff, it is good to be back in school. I think everybody enjoyed a one-day reprieve before finals, but day two, I think we were ready to get back into action. So it's good to be back. I have to say that our teachers and students have been hard at work preparing for finals, being ready to go. We started our first day of finals today. Things went, you know, very smoothly and things are going well. One of the things that we're providing the board with is a preview of our summer school catalog, which has been completed and completed ahead of schedule. I want to thank Jim Sullivan, who's our assistant principal, for leading the efforts and doing a nice job building out the program. Some of the things that I would like to highlight is that we are featuring more offerings this year for students in the summer. Many of the opportunities are enrichment activities. But I think there's also another important component that you'll see in terms of support and I think supports some of the district initiatives and part of our strategic plan. In particular, I'd like to point out our math ladders course. And our math ladders course helps students reach their mathematical goals. We have an incoming AAA ladder for students who have taken algebra and need that extra support when they want to accelerate and take the most rigorous curriculum. We also have a trigonometry ladder. We have a career connections pilot program for juniors and seniors, which provides a four-week project-based internship experience. Students have real-world experiences on specific career clusters such as business, engineering, technology, and public administration. So some exciting offerings for our students in the summer of 2015. At our next board meeting, we're going to present an update regarding our regular curricular offerings for the 2015-2016 school year. On February 3rd, we're going to hold our Second Annual E-Day. And E stands for Entertainment, Excitement, Emotional Wellness, lots of great things, and certainly enjoy the journey. It's a regular school day with shortened periods. During the middle of the day, we take time to come together as a community. There'll be a dramatic performance from an outside theater group that I think all students and faculty will enjoy. We'll host a number of workshops. And the goal is to break up the winter doldrums and really live our ideals of value of community and balance in students' lives. So we're excited about that day and plans are well underway. And so last thing I'd just say is, you know, we are wrapping up this week. And at the end of this week, we've got a big athletic matchup. So after we work hard and focus on our priorities of academics, timing couldn't be better for our sports teams, we're going to have a big sports day. Our senior swim team will take on Stevenson High School, one of our top rivals, followed by 7:00 PM varsity basketball game where the undefeated scouts will play the unbeaten Stevenson Patriots. So we're very excited about that game. Expect probably a sellout. So if you want to get there, get there early. Should be very exciting. And I think school spirit is an all-time high. So on that note, school spirit and leadership, I'd like to pass it over to our student council president, Luke Gibson.
Thank you, everyone, for having me and Happy New Year. The biggest event on the calendar at our school right now is Turnabout, which is going to occur on January 24th. It's our winter formal where the girls ask the guys. Kind of an overarching theme that has been eminent in student council, has been making a lot of changes this year. And so in Turnabout, we unfortunately had to fire our DJ who we've had for about, I think, five to 10 years and decided to hire one of our own. His name is Jordan Wessel. So hopefully, he can bring a new spice to the dance. And on top of that, we ordered some new light speakers and even a smoke and laser show that is going to occur during the dance. Hopefully, that'll keep everyone at the dance for a little bit longer. On top of that, we also are bringing Susie Swirl, which is a frozen yogurt restaurant in Lake Bluff. They're going to cater three different flavors, two dairy options and one non-dairy option along with three toppings for every student. There'll be plenty for everyone. Tickets are online until Wednesday, January 14th. And based on how many tickets we sell, you know, we'll notify Susie Swirl as to how many cups to order and stuff like that. We also raised the prices from $20 to $25. So essentially, for the girls who will be buying two tickets, it's a $10 increase. This is to compensate for the additional DJs and smoke laser show type things so that we can still donate money to Greenwood Elementary in Waukegan, which is, remains our charity that, you know, we'll be donating to throughout the rest of the year. A couple smaller things. About a month and a half ago, we reached out to every club and even teachers in our school and asked them if they would like any help with charities or, you know, any school-related events that we can help out with, you know, trying to get student council to be a more renowned club at our school. So immediately, a teacher at our school, Ms. Levinson, who's a Spanish teacher, emailed us back and said that she needed help with a coat drive for a school in Chicago. So we said, we're happy to help. There are about 427 kids at the school. So our goal is to organize all the homerooms third period to bring in coats. Every student who brings in a coat will receive a raffle ticket where three prizes will be raffled off. And on top of that, the classroom who raises the most coats is going to receive like a Chipotle lunch or bagels, something like that. Another couple small things that student council did that weren't as well-known throughout the school was adopt a family. Each class cabinet adopted their own family for Christmas, usually about five people. It's, you know, we buy gifts for the kids. And we all went down, about 25 kids from, you know, each cabinet went down to Walmart and we bought gifts for, you know, over 25 kids. So it was really an incredible experience. Also, some of you may have heard of the Johnson family. Mr. Johnson, who's a teacher at our school in the special ed department, has been through unthinkable challenges throughout the past five to 10 years. One of his daughters, who has cancer right now, is going through chemotherapy and is at home. And we reached out to his family, asking, you know, in what way can we help her, you know, make this challenge more comfortable, if that. So me and Ms. Harmsen went out to GameStop and we bought her an Xbox and three games, you know, for her to keep busy throughout this tough time. Mr. Harmsen, who's Ms. Harmsen's wife, or husband, excuse me, he had heard of a wrestler on the Lake Forest wrestling team who was clearly having financial problems and was wearing the same clothes to school each day and reached out to Mrs. Harmsen and student council. So Ms. Harmsen was nice enough to go out to Walmart, you know, after receiving his clothes sizes and buying him shirts, sweatshirts, shorts, pants, stuff like that. You know, this is another small thing, you know, that student council is trying to do this year, reaching out to anyone we can help. And we're certainly doing that. Lastly, if you can remember this far away, Veterans Day, I think it was about a month and a half ago, two months ago, there was a Veterans Day video and essay contest. One of our members of student council, Maddie Kung, made a video about Veterans Day and what it means to them. She won $500 that she decided to donate to student council for Greenwood Elementary. And that was just, it was an incredible decision on her part and obviously helped us and the students over at Greenwood. So thank you for listening to that long update on everything that's going on. Thank you.
It's a great update, Luke and Mr. Rogers. Thanks very much for that. Couple other things. The board members have at their table an invitation from the Lake Forest Foundation to add to their already $92,000 this year to date. Lake Forest Foundation, board members may remember, is the group responsible for assisting in the creation of the Innovation Incubator this year and benefiting students across the district. We have 100 new members signed up this year with the hope of hitting 115 new members, District 115. So if you have not yet donated, you could help them meet this goal. If you have time, the Spring Luncheon is on April 22nd. That is a Wednesday and that is really yet another remarkable event in the city of Lake Forest. So next week, very importantly, we will be sending a link to a comprehensive climate survey. And the survey is designed to assess perceptions of the school environment, including safety, relationships, support for learning, and the environment within the school. The National School Climate Center is a national leader in school surveys and data analysis. They developed the survey. It should take approximately 20 minutes to complete and will be given to all parents and school personnel. All students in grades three through 12, that's Deer Path, District 67, and 115 will take an age-appropriate student version of the survey at their respective school. The feedback is very important to help us understand and improve our schools. It's important to note that all responses are anonymous. The National School Climate Center will then compile all of the results, conduct a thorough analysis, and then when the process is completed, they will send us a detailed report of our results. These results will be analyzed by the district and school leadership teams and be used to inform future planning initiatives. We will also share the results with you once we have received all the information. We certainly hope that all parents, students, and staff will join us in the effort to make our schools even better place. Last time, I think we had a very low parent participation, somewhere along the lines of 65 people participated. I think we can expect a much, much higher number to participate, in part because we had such robust attendance at our mission-vision work. And the theme of the importance of emotional wellness came through loud and clear from that. Finally, from a superintendent's perspective, I wanted to share a couple of things about our inclement weather that we had and the work that we're doing there. We had two cold days, which are very unusual for us. They happened to be the same two days that we had off last year for the same reason. So the superintendent's and the region have already called off next year, Wednesday and Thursday, after we get back from break. We do have issues that play a significant role in whether or not we can conduct school and most particularly, whether or not we will have a student standing and waiting for a bus for longer than 15 minutes. Because the 15-minute time period is what's critical. From the new National Weather Service, they put out new guidelines on how long a wind chill will take until exposed skin freezes. And we looked at the 15-minute period and looked at how many of our buses will have difficulty running in this kind of weather? How often does it happen that we have students standing out there waiting? We also had, last year alone, in the cold snap, we had 11 different univents. Those are the air exchangers and heaters in the classrooms. 11 of those stopped functioning. And that required maintenance to be in there all night and then all the next day. And then the classrooms were above 50 degrees. So effectively, you have 11 classrooms in which you really can't conduct instruction. Students have to go elsewhere. That creates all sorts of distractions and whatnot. The biggest issue from superintendent's point of view at this point, myself and my colleagues, is the question of what do we do in the event of an evacuation? So if we need to evacuate the school, if we have an emergency of some kind, are the sites more than a 15-minute walk away from our building? How long does it take us to get, for example, a student in a wheelchair from our site to the evacuation site? If that is 15 minutes or more, we're knowingly exposing students to frostbite conditions in a period of less than 15 minutes. We have since learned the possibility that we can actually, something that I had never even heard of until about a week ago, that we could potentially zone the building off and have one part of the building eligible for an evacuation while we're conducting research on why an alarm went off on a different part of the building. We're not sure that we're going to be able to do that. We do know at this point that other school districts do have this ability. So students still need to exit, their regular exit, get out of the building as quickly as possible, but then they can then hustle over to, for example, the field house where they could be held until such time as the building has been cleared. For our elementary districts, the questions are even more problematic. Smaller children obviously take longer time, much longer time to get bundled up and also get to an evacuation site. So we're going to be looking at whether or not we can conduct school with 25-degree or below wind chill or not. One of my colleagues happened to call International Falls and spoke with them, the coldest place in the continental United States. Their guideline is 50 degrees below zero wind chill. Ours has been the 15-minute mark. And I think it will remain there until we can determine with a level of confidence that we have a place where we can have our kids within 15 minutes if we need to evacuate the building. And with that concludes the superintendent's report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Simic. And that'll bring us to our report for the night on the strategic plan.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DeBose. So this is an update on our strategic plan. The strategic plan is an outgrowth of the mission and vision and milestone project we had last year. And what I wanted to do is provide an update on some of the qualitative and quantitative things that we are doing with more of a follow-up later on in the year, with more of an emphasis on our quantitative, the numbers that we have that we're driving, that many of these activities are driving towards. So I'm going to skip to an executive summary at the end. This was in the board packet. So there's key takeaways. The first is, I would point towards the freshman class technology rollout as a really key undertaking for this year. This is, in fact, for many districts, this could be the sole focus of an entire year, the only thing they're trying to do, the big initiative. We have this along with many, many others. This has been a seamless rollout for us with a tremendous amount of emphasis on our adult and student support systems, the Achilles heel of every one of these rollouts. I give Mr. Rogers and his team a great deal of credit for this, is the support that they have provided for our staff for issues of how do I do X, Y, and Z? So not break-fix issues. Coming to the yoga studio and other snappy names, they've got Jimmy the Digital Ninja or whatever his name is as a helper. One of the best things that we can hear from our school personnel is, man, when we need help, it comes right away and it's exactly what we need. These are tremendous compliments. And this is the area where all organizations, school organizations, I would say, as much as anyone else, stumble and fall. The other thing that's not very sexy, but is very effective, is the aggregation of our resources for our math and English students. We have 250 to 300 kids a week utilizing our Math Resource Center. That is a one place. Everybody can go. There are at least two teachers in there all the time. And very importantly, there are peer tutors in there as well. So students working with other students, not just teachers working with students. In terms of our emotional wellness, that's one of the themes from the mission and vision work, loud and clear came, make sure you don't lose sight of that initiative. And so in the superintendent's report, I talked about the comprehensive school climate inventory. That's an ongoing commitment to emotional wellness. And then also, there'll be a number of metrics with that and action plans that grow out of that, a great deal of assistance that that organization provides for us. Very importantly also, we will have an author visit on August 21st from Dr. Carol Dweck, the author of Mindset. This will be a focus of community-wide discussions. We're going to be making the rounds with APT groups and with other civic leaders and engaging our staff very broadly and very deeply. What's important about the visit is not the author visit, very frankly. It is the lead-up and the follow-up that makes the difference. So what's next for us, we have, as Mr. Rogers mentioned, an expansion of summer school courses, including ladder classes. These ladder classes are critically important and a very interesting thing to help kids scaffold up to classes that they might not otherwise have a chance to get to, including calculus and statistics. We have a rollout of our school climate survey, as I mentioned, our community book talks. And next year, the big undertaking for us is going to be the expansion of our tech rollout, including grades 10 through 12. So the next year's ninth graders will be 10th graders, so it'll actually be nine, 11, and 12 for the tech rollout. So that is the executive summary. This is intentionally supposed to be a brief summary with time for questions from the board as necessary and as desired. So with that, that concludes the superintendent's report. There's a great deal of detail prior to that in the other parts of the packet. How did you run time?
Board members, any questions or comments?
I just wanted to say that I'm really glad to see additional summer school offerings.
Thank you. I was very pleased we talked about it in Cabinet today. A lot of work, a lot of background work went into that. And that's something that I know some of you as parents and as, you've heard from community residents, say we'd like to see more of this offered. And so not only are we expanding it, but it's also we have the catalog and the offerings out earlier than our neighboring districts. Any other questions, comments, or confessions from the board this time? Good? All right. So look forward to me coming back later on in the year. And we'll have a more detailed look at some of the quantitative metrics, the ACT data, the persistence data, and so on. Some of those we've discussed in other parts. We'll put all those together into one presentation for you. So thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simic. Now we'll have time for comments from any member of the public who's here. Look out in the vast audience. One member of the public here, if he would like to make a comment. He happens to be a candidate for the board in the upcoming election. Thank you. I suspected you wouldn't want to comment, but I had to ask. It's on the agenda here. Okay. That then brings us to board committee reports. Board Education Committee, Mrs. Snoblen.
The Education Committee has not met since our last meeting. I think our next meeting is scheduled for February, but I don't have the exact date. Yeah, that sounds right. I'm pretty sure it's the first Wednesday in February, so it's probably the third. Thank you.
Okay. Finance and Operations Committee.
Finance and Operations did meet, met on January 9th. And thanks to my friend and colleague, Dave Schreiber, he attended that meeting on my behalf. In fact, he tried to attend twice since I told him the meeting was actually Thursday the 8th instead of Friday the 9th. So Dave, if you're out there, I owe you one. Thank you. No, we had a great meeting. And this is a supplemental meeting. One of the changes that we made with Finance and Operations at the beginning of the year is realizing that it's much harder to get new meetings on the calendar than it is anything else. So we made sure that we booked some additional dates. And this is one of those meetings that we did have the luxury to have. We covered several things. The first was an update from William Blair on the municipal bond market and those rates. So the public knows, we're constantly looking at what those options are. We still have some options available to us. The good news is, there really isn't much upward pressure on rates at this point with things that are going on. In fact, the rates have slipped a little bit, which is a good thing for us at this point. What it does is give us a little additional time to continue to take a look at that. And none of us on the board profess to be experts in that regard, which is why William Blair is involved. And Alan and his whole team do a wonderful job in constantly staying in touch with what that looks like. So the public should know that we're constantly involved in making sure that we're monitoring that closely. We also had an update on an RFP for online registration, which we're going to talk about a little bit later on, so I won't go too much into that. We also did a technology overview. As you know, we've made commitments in technology on behalf of the whole school. And I think we got a fantastic technology team that's working on developing not only what has worked, what we need to fix, what needs to be revised, but also start thinking more in terms of a five-year plan. And Cornelius and his team do a wonderful job keeping us abreast of, you know, all the puts and takes associated with what we're doing, with the constant idea of trying to improve and getting better at what we do, particularly as it relates to onboarding students with new technology and understanding the needs and requirements that we're going to have to have as we continue to expand that. And then we had a quick update on, you know, some additional things just in terms of total operation. So generally, a great meeting that, thanks to the team and their preparation, was very valuable. So thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Any questions or comments from other board members? Okay. That then brings us to liaison reports. Are there any liaison reports? Anything from NSSED?
Yeah, quick, NSSED. We did have a meeting where we did discuss the fee structure. And that's still under review. But it is promising for districts such as our own where we really actually have a very small student footprint. And with that small footprint, we carry an inordinate amount of the expense. There is talk about a fee structure change. And because of this change, District 112, Highland Park, who had previously put in a letter to resign from the consortium, they rescinded their letter and they're willing to stick it out for another year to see if, and they're like us in that they do have a, you know, smaller footprint. And so, you know, that's ongoing and we'll just see where it goes.
Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the problem with that fee structure from our vantage point and from Highland Park's vantage point, it sounds like, is that it's a combination of students enrolled and property equalized assessed value in the district.
It's based on fixed cost idea funds, which are state and federal dollars. And basically, we give them all of our dollars and they give us some of that back. But as it stands now, we really pay an inordinate amount of the operating expenses for the NSSED as a whole.
Ted, is that the same revised fee structure that we heard about previously or have they made some movement since then?
No, it's what we discussed when we had an executive session about two months ago.
Any other liaison reports? Okay, that brings us to action items. The first item on the list, as Mr. Powers alluded, is approval of an online registration process and expenses. So, Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Black. And Mrs. Hermes, would you care to speak to this issue for us? Are we all set to go or is that Mrs. Tardis? Brittany, yeah?
So included in your packet tonight is a memo that explains the district's process for selecting and recommending an online registration vendor. As some of you may know, our current registration process is pretty... As some of you may know, our current registration process is pretty inconvenient and manually[602.04][602.04]intensive for both parents and staff. So our aim with the online registration system was to streamline this process and allow parents to register and pay fees all at once. So to start this project, we formed a committee of 10 members, which consisted of administration, business office officials, school secretaries, athletics, both from District 67 and 115. This committee developed an attribute list. If you could have anything and everything in an online registration system, what would you want? We used this list and developed an RFP. An RFP was sent out to 12 online registration vendors. We received five responses, and from the responses we received, we invited three companies to present to our committee. After the presentations, we narrowed it down to a company called InfoSnap. InfoSnap is used widely in northern Illinois by many, many school districts. They have a clean and concise interface for parents. As a backend user, you'll receive the necessary notifications. The system will allow us to manipulate data and receive the necessary reports. It's also endorsed by Power School, which is our student information system. So the information that'll be collected in InfoSnap will be directly uploaded to Power School. There'll be no manual data imported into Power School anymore. And we receive positive references from current and even former clients of InfoSnap. So we're recommending InfoSnap to move forward for the 15, 16 school year. This will allow us to have online registration for our sophomore, juniors, and seniors. And then 16, 17, we can add on our freshmen. Freshmen register in February, and February is right around the corner, so we're getting there. So that's what we're hoping for. I gladly answer any questions, if you guys had any.
No questions, but I was very, very impressed in reading the packet by the process that you went through and the quality of your RFP. That was your work. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Brittany, from a cost perspective, you did a nice job laying out year one, year two. Any guess as what some of the ongoing costs may be in year three and beyond?
What I've heard from other districts is there's a percentage increase. They had first came to us with the contract that said a certain percentage, and we asked that to be removed so we can negotiate it going forward. If we see no changes that would need to be in year three with the system, we don't feel that there should be a percentage increase, or if there's a significant decrease in enrollment or whatso. So I don't think there's a big increase that's expected, but it's negotiable with the company after year two.
Thanks. So with this, a parent in District 67 can have their child go to the high school and not have to fill out all the same forms for their twins or their triplets or what have you. Is that correct?
So it's a little complicated. District 67 and District 115 have two separate Power School servers, and Cornelius, correct me if I'm wrong. What we do now is we do get Power School information on our students from 67 and 65 and put it into our system. I believe that we will still be able to collect this, so when you go to InfoSnap, you'll see your information in there and corrected if needed, but your students won't necessarily be linked because it's two separate student information systems.
That's a huge time savings for parents. And as a user of both of the districts, I can tell you, it is really going to be very, very well received by our parents because they can do this at their leisure. And if they need any handholding, they can come into this office in the summertime and get help at any time. Is that right?
Correct. So it is going to be online, but we'll have a couple different options. So we will have a computer available for anyone that needs to come in. We will also gladly send out a registration packet, paper-based, if they would still like to do that. Or we can even do it over the phone with our registrar or Natalia, our fee specialist in the business office. So many options out there for families. Any other questions?
Any further comments? Thank you very much. Sounds like a great program, and I'm sure the parent community, as Mr. Simic said, will look forward to it immensely and enjoy it immensely.
Some of the feedback I heard from other districts is parents will be surprised what information is in the system for them, that they haven't updated in probably three to four years. So we're glad to get the correct information with this new system going forward.
Thank you very much, Brittany. Can I have a motion regarding this action item, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115 Board of Education, approve the online registration system with a first-year cost of $12,600.
Second?
Thank you very much. Any further comment, board members? Who we have a roll call vote? Mrs. Barrett?
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Mr. Black?
Aye. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. That brings us to the next action item, which is approval of an agreement with the LFHS Hockey Club.
Thank you, Mr. Black. This is something that I'd like to ask Mr. Rogers to speak to for us. I really appreciate the work that Mr. Rogers has done with the hockey club. It is more complex, much like online registration, not necessarily terribly exciting, but nonetheless very, very important for these families and also for our schools. So, Mr. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Simic. We do believe it's best practice to have a clear contract between the high school and the hockey club, as is done with our neighboring districts. We worked with our council, Brian Crowley, in putting together a contract and agreement. So some of the important things that I want to note, it does create a separation in terms of liability between the hockey association and the school district. In the past, there was no such agreement for Lake Forest. Secondly, it does release our athletic department from any possibility of code of conduct issues. It is somewhat of an unreasonable expectation for our athletic department to have to police and oversee a club organization that's not directly affiliated with the school. It does create some clear guidelines and separation in terms of funding as well. In terms of our students, one of the important things that it does is it establishes and maintains the opportunity to get a athletic waiver. And so this is something, especially over the last year, as the waivers started to expire, a lot of our students were concerned, and we thought it was very important, seeing the amount of time and energy, being the parent of not of a Lake Forest hockey, but another hockey player, and knowing how much time they put into it, again honoring the values of balance in our students' lives. So this will allow our 11th and 12th grade hockey players to be granted a physical education waiver. And then lastly, for our students, it does also establish an opportunity and a forum for recognition of our students through our yearbook, along with other student athletes in our announcements, and so on and so forth. So it values the hard work that they do in representing our community, and it creates, I think, a clear and lasting agreement between the school and the hockey organization.
Thank you, Mr. Rogers. If I could just maybe provide some background, and please fill in if I'm not accurate. The reason for this agreement, the hockey club stands apart from most of our sports activities in that it is a club organization. It is not funded by the school. It is not managed by the school. They hire their own coaches. They provide their own rink time. They hire their own referees. It's not part of IHSA, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. And yet, we want to provide the opportunity for our students to play hockey under the Lake Forest High School banner and provide them the recognition that other sports activities can provide in terms of yearbook and honors night and these kinds of things. Is that a correct summary?
Absolutely. The only thing I would point out is there will be the Scouts Hockey Club. It'll no longer be the Lake Forest High School Hockey Club, so there'll be the Lake Forest Scouts, and that's part of the legal issue, working this through and to enable it. But you're absolutely right in terms of the spirit of this agreement. And so one of the ways that we're able to guarantee the waiver is we kind of did our due diligence and looked at how could we provide this waiver for a club sport. I think the main thing we looked at is there's some language through the Illinois State Board of Education that talks about interscholastic sports. And this certainly fits our definition of interscholastic sports because our team does exactly that. They play other schools, many other schools in northern Illinois. So it's not as some, you may have heard of some other club teams or activities where it's not necessarily an interscholastic type of activity. So in many ways, it is the type of interscholastic competition that we see within football or within basketball. But as you pointed out, there is a clear delineation in terms of funding and liability I think that need to be established.
Is hockey the only sport we have like that now, or are there others? My impression is there are, is at least one other, but please...
So hockey is the only sport that we have that's like that. Lacrosse is an interesting sport, too. We also have field hockey, which is not an IHSA sport, so they're kind of in between. So with the field hockey situation, and there's a different type of a setup, it actually is a school-sponsored sport, but it is not an IHSA sport.
What about sailing? My impression was the Lake Forest Sailing Club was more attuned, more similar to hockey than...
So I think the Sailing Club actually falls out of even farther down the continuum in terms of where it would be, and not sure that we would want to follow up with a similar agreement. The reason being is, the competitions that the Sailing Club actually is involved with, they are actually sailing against other private clubs from across the country. They're not necessarily, it's not an interscholastic sport where they're playing other high schools. Also, the makeup of the Sailing Club involves kids from multiple schools as well.
Okay. Well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Real quick, is there any, is there any member of the Lake Forest Hockey Club that is not a member of Lake Forest High School?
Our understanding, on the boys' side, there is not. On the girls' side, which we have not entered an agreement with them as of yet, you do have girls from other schools involved. But on the boys' side, it's my understanding at this point that it is strictly Lake Forest High School students.
There's nothing, with this new agreement, there's nothing saying that, I mean, they can determine what their own team is based upon their own rules and bylaws. They don't necessarily have to be Lake Forest High School students.
I believe you're correct.
I just had a question, Mr. Rogers. Are there any other sports or activities that would qualify for the athletic waiver? I'm thinking kids that play tennis outside of the school tennis team, or dance, or...
In doing our work, you know, we contacted the regional office. We also looked at, very closely at, the language, trying to see if there was interpretation, talked to our attorneys. At this time, we do not see any other activities. I think there's also the idea, and there certainly are exceptional athletes, exceptional students that partake in individual activities. You might have a figure skater. You might have somebody that's involved with equestrian events. But right now, that would not be covered because, again, we're looking for interscholastic sports, and that's the thing that we're hanging on in terms of the definition, which allows us to have this type of agreement. Otherwise, we can't see how we can justify the state's requirement for giving a waiver. And I just will go on a little bit farther. You know, one of the things, as we look to the future, you know, when we went through our schedule initiative, we found that many of our students, again, are doing exceptional things, and it might be in one of those sports activities, it might be in an outside theater group. But finding ways, as we start to re-envision what the school day can look like, to provide opportunities for balance in students' lives. So I think, as we look to the future, I think we want to create that type of balance for students whenever we have that opportunity and whenever it's merited.
Other questions, board members? It seems like a healthy delineation of the relationship, which has not heretofore existed, so I certainly support it. Let's go ahead and have a roll call vote. Mrs. Barrett? Have we not had a motion yet? Can I have a motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115 Board of Education, approve the agreement with the LFHS Hockey Club as presented.
Second.
Thank you very much. Now, Mrs. Barrett?
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay. Thank you very much, board members. That brings us to approval of staff compensation. Mr. Simic?
Thank you, Mr. Black. This is something that we have discussed in our executive sessions, and I recommend its approval as presented.
Thank you very much. I think there has been, as you alluded, considerable discussion of this. Any questions, board members on this issue? Hearing none. Do I have a motion, please?
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115 Board of Education, approve the staff compensation as presented.
Second?
Thank you very much. Mrs. Barrett, a roll call?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you very much, fellow board members, which brings us to our last action item, approval of the human resources report.
I recommend approving the human resources report as presented.
Board members, any questions? Then I'll entertain a motion.
I move that the Lake Forest Community High School, District 115 Board of Education, approve the human resources report as presented.
Thank you very much. Roll call, Mrs. Barrett?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mr. Black?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you. That brings us to... Approval of disbursements and payrolls and financial statements for December 2014, approval of towel service contract, recognition of the Code gift, minutes of the meeting of, regular meeting of December 9th, 2014, minutes of an executive session on December 9th, 2014, and the routine disposal of audio recordings. Any item can be removed from the consent agenda if a board member so desires. So are there any concerns about any consent agenda items from a board member?
I don't request removing an item, but when there is a gift, I think it might be nice to acknowledge it in a little bit more public way, if it could just be read out.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea, number one, and I was personally going to acknowledge this one as it comes from a longstanding and well-admired teacher that many of us know. So maybe we'll do that after the approval. Are there any comments or questions, other than wanting to remove an item from board members? Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved? Second.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Barrett?
Mr. Powers?
Aye.
Mr. Markison?
Aye.
Mrs. Sorenson?
Aye.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Aye.
Mr. Powers?
Aye, again.
Thank you. Mr. Black?
Aye. I want some medication. That's why I'm having problems remembering to ask for motions and what have you. Maybe you have a similar excuse, Mrs. Barrett?
Mr. Mormon?
Aye.
Motion passes.
It's the Chicago way, right? Or I could say the Louisiana way, in my case.
I didn't find that remotely funny.
Just for the public record.
Okay, two issues. Mike, would you like to, Mr. Simic, would you like to make some comments about the Code gift to put it in its appropriate perspective?
Yeah, I'd be very happy to. Mr. Black, you mentioned one of our longstanding and very beloved teachers, Mr. Dan Code. He's been kind enough to donate an open water kayak to the district, and he receives no services or remuneration for this donation. The district has, makes no indication of the fair market value for the donated item. They are tax-deductible by law, but in this case, Mr. Code has donated a kayak from his family to our school to benefit our outdoor education program. And Mr. Moorhead, Mr. Werner, and Mr. Landvik use these kayaks a great deal and very much appreciate that donation.
And speaking for the rest of the board, we appreciate it as well, and we appreciate Mr. Code's longstanding and wonderful service to the district. On another matter related to the consent agenda, some of you might remember, there was considerable discussion at the last meeting about whether there were indeed regulations about what went into consent agenda as opposed to in action items. And, Mr. Simic, you've done some investigation into that, so if you could inform us as to what you found out.
And working from my likewise sketchy memory, I'll do what I can on that account. We spoke with our district attorneys on what can, what may and may not be included in the consent agenda. There are no state laws that govern what should be on a consent agenda or not. It's very much up to the discretion of the board and... It's very much up to the discretion of the board, and in this case, the initial placement of what is on the consent agenda is something that is done by the board president, typically in conjunction with the board vice president, and discussion with the superintendent. And then, at the time of the meeting, any one of the items can be removed from the consent agenda by any board member at their request. They do urge a practice that we currently utilize in a district, which is, don't just say, have approval for the consent agenda, so moved, and then take a vote. They recommend itemizing, reading down the list of items within the consent agenda in detail so that it is clear at the time of the motion what is being proposed. And so, our practices are consistent with our attorney's recommendations, and our past practices, we can continue in, to continue to utilize as we have.
Thank you very much. Any questions, board members? Again, it's my understanding, based on our conversation, while there aren't any regulations, the intent, and I can tell you my intent, my intent as board president, is to limit items on a consent agenda to those things which are not controversial, not high-dollar amounts, that would not require, you know, any significant amount of discussion or consideration.
Yeah, that's another thing that our attorney suggested, is things that are perfunctory in nature, that are routine, that are not controversial, not intended to be used to bury something in any way, things that will not require discussion of any extent at all are things that are eligible typically for consent agendas across the state.
Mrs. Snoblan?
Not to belabor the point, but in my almost eight years on the board, I don't recall there ever being any concern that we were trying to conceal anything by putting it on the consent agenda, and those items are always publicly available if anyone does have any questions or concerns about them.
Thank you. Obviously, I agree. I thought you were trying to tell me something. You were moving your mouse there. Okay. We're getting near the end here. We had two FOIA requests during the month, and in terms of announcements, this coming Friday, January 16th, is Faculty Work Day, so there won't be any student attendance. Monday, January 19th, there is also no school, as it is Martin Luther King Day. Wednesday, January 28th, is a late start day. Classes, school will start at 9:30 a.m. Tuesday, February 10th, is our next regular Board of Education meeting at 7:00 p.m. here in the West Campus Boardroom. Any other items that a board member would like to bring to the attention of the public? Hearing not, hearing none, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second?
Thank you very much. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned.